Welcome, everybody. And welcome to everyone watching on Street Foot Live. We have a number of board items on our agenda tonight, so we'll get right into it. So meeting's called order. We'll go to item number two, Declaration of Conflict of Interest. Oh, before I do that, I want to acknowledge the land upon which we gather is a traditional territory of the Big Ma. We pay our respects to the indigenous Big Ma people, this territory of past, present, and future. So with that, we'll move to item number two, which is Declaration of Conflict of Interest. If anyone has a conflict of interest with any of the items on the agenda that we'll be covering tonight, please declare so now. If not, we'll move to item number three. I'll ask for a motion for approval of the agenda unless there's something someone would like to add or something someone would like to defer.
So move.
Thank you, second? Hold second. Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor? Contrary minded, motion carried. Okay, we'll now go to the minutes of our regular council meeting of 13th of January 2021. Is there anything in those minutes, any errors or omissions in the minutes that anyone noticed? Or are there any things in there that anyone would like to follow up? And I guess that'll be our next item. Any, any errors or omissions in the minutes? If not, I'll ask for a motion for approval of the minutes.
So move.
Hold second now.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary minded, motion carried. Okay, we'll now move to business arising from the minutes. Is there anything in the minutes that will not be covering in tonight's agenda? Anything that anyone wants to follow up on from our last meeting?
Just a question I had was, okay, with regards to issue there of crossing currents, we're looking at where we're at with that issue. I know we're not broken at lights.
Will we be covering that? I'll just ask the Chair of Safety Services if we'll be covering that in the Safety Services report?
No. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anything else that anyone noticed that we're not going to be covering in tonight's agenda? Okay, if not, we'll move to item number six, Presentations from the Floor. Do we have any presentations from the floor, Robert?
Nope.
No? Okay. We'll now go to my report, item number seven, and the report is in your package. I guess some of the highlights are that a meeting with Minister James Elwood, MLF Stratford, discussed ISIP funding. And just in correction there, I provided a welcome gift and a visit to Taco Boys. But because of the storm, our meeting with the, and presentation to the Lucky Bean will be taking place this Friday. So great to have those two new businesses in town and just wanted to thank them for coming to Stratford and welcome them because they're really a great addition to our town.
I want to worship, worship, practice new business. Is there, was the invitation set up just to mayor only or just to councilor? Anytime we reach out on the work, just for new business?
I've always been asked by, Wendy usually contacts me, but I don't know if there's any, I don't see anything wrong with that. If you'd like to come along, I'll certainly, I'll, I'll, I'll ask Wendy maybe when you're inviting me, Wendy, if you would just conclude council with that, anybody that wants to come to the, to the presentation. Is that okay, Wendy?
Yep.
Yes, okay, thank you. Anything else from my, my report? One of the highlights for me this month was attending Youth Center Awards Night along with Counselor Glant. And we just, I don't know if any, any other camps, anyone else was there? Okay. But it was great. I think your granddaughter, is there Counselor Kent McDonald?
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, yeah. And special shout out to Edie Duncan, who won the, not only for, well, for her age group for the most number of hours, but also Youth Center overall Volunteer of the Year. It's the first time that an older age group, someone from the younger age group has won that, so it's really, really well deserved. Any questions on my report? Okay, we'll move now to the item number eight, Chief Administrative Officer Report. The last CEO, Robert Hughes, give his report.
Thank you, Your Worship. Our reports in your package, I'll just highlight a couple of items. Sent you a note on the community campus, so we have Upland hired to do the master plan for the campus. We had four proposals, great proposals, and Upland in association with CBCL and RHAD Architects, the highest score company. That's the firm that's currently doing our waterfront plan. On the, on the other aspects of the campus, I did call IROC today just to get an update. And they're going to, they're hoping to advertise our annexation application next Thursday. And then they have 30 days to, for response for residents or other interested parties. So that'll take them to about March 18th. And if they don't get any significant or any at all concerns expressed, then they'll go ahead and make their decision and be figured within probably a short period of time. So hopefully by around the first of April, they will have their recommendation to the province to, to officially accept and make the annexation happen. He did say that there's a couple that they have already submitted to them and have been there for some time. So we may have to push a little on that to, to make sure that it gets turned around by the province quickly. But hopefully if they don't get those negative comments from people on it, then it'll go fairly quickly and we'll, we'll have an answer from IROC by around the first of April. And he said that in his whole time there, there was only two that ever actually went to a hearing. And they're big ones like Long Kenzie District, a lot of people were opposed to it. So, so optimistic that that'll be done by around the first of April. Then however long it takes the province to turn it around, we can start the reselling process. We, we have the capital area housing demand study underway now. And we've arranged for a consultant, our HR consultant, to come in and train our staff on how to hear, listen to complaints from employees and then also for managers and supervisors on how to properly investigate, follow up on those complaints. It's part of our efforts to continue to improve. Happy to answer any questions and anything else in the report.
Any questions for CEO Hughes? Thank you very much for your report. Okay, we'll now move to Safety Services. I want to, we'd like to welcome Corporal Glenn Dudley from the RCMP to our meeting. Welcome Corporal Dudley.
Thank you.
Thank you for attending. I'll now turn it over to Chair of Safety Services, Counselor Garrett Smith.
Thank you, Your Worship. Report for the month is as follows, 8A, or excuse me, 9A, which is Safety Services meeting held on 18th of January. This is basically an introduction meeting for the new members of the board. Briefly went over the fire department, the peace contract, the humane services, and basically told them what they do for us and how they do it, their employing system. We also went over the rules and regulations that we have in place and what's expected of them. This report, as mostly, most of my reports, the monthly stats that were covered up in this meeting were already heard in a previous council meeting in January. So I'll be redundant to go over those. That is basically it. Now, we did talk about crossing currents. And Jeremy C. can help me out here, but basically we're still working on it. And we have tried to make a decision about putting the flag back up at intersections. And any intersection identified as a intersection used by the children or students should have flags put up also. But that, we'll leave that to Jeremy to talk about what he has, any more information?
Well, the flags are going back up today. We had a meeting today and we discussed that, so they're going to be back out. We did have another discussion with the Chief Engineer of the province about flashing lights and he indicated he would make contact with me hopefully this week. But, you know, with the storm day and the holiday coming, maybe next week before he gets home. But this is the third time in contact. Somebody said he's, we've opened discussions on that and we'll look into getting that installed. So just hoping like we will be able to get that, but being confirmation from them first.
Thank you. Questions?
Was there any concerns with regards to the flag there with COVID?
Most of the, most of the other communities have them back out. And it's like everything else, right? People have to understand that you need to sanitize your hands after touching services. And most people are wearing gloves this time of year too, so I don't think there's any problem with putting them back out.
Counselor Smith, as a council, I think we decided to go with the flash of lights, so.
Yep. That's, that's, that's the discussion we were on the back of, yeah. And that's, that's the path we're heading down now. But we have Minister Hyways, he has to be updated on the file. And plus, we have to get the okay from the Department of Hyways. So I'm sure that working closely together, we can get this done. He's on two highways next door, Mr. Hyways.
So if I could just ask one question. The flashing lights, I know that the most complaints I've heard from residents is about the crosswalk by the end of Marion Drive and the Stratford Road. I wonder if there's any kind of priority that could be given to, you know, the seemingly most used and most dangerous ones or, or all, I know there's five different spots, but would they all be going up together? Or would it be?
Our hope would be that they would install them all together, but I don't think that will happen. But the one at the school is the priority, the next one that you just spoke about would be the second on the priority list, I'm sure.
The other one question I had is about, I understood there was to be a further discussion with the home and school?
We did have a discussion before we made a decision or a recommendation to council with regard to flashing lights. When I did have that discussion with that person, they thought it was a better idea because they liked the idea of the 24 hours a day. There is after-school programs that children do attend and they like the fact that the lights would be there to get back them across during that time, so they are, they wrote them.
So it was their recommendation or was they were okay with it?
No, they were okay with it. Was there a recommendation that we look at that as well as the crossing currents? But once they heard both sides of the story, they thought that that might be a better, better situation because there is something there 24 hours a day with the crossing currents. Only there are certain, certain times of the day.
Okay, thank you.
No problem, thank you.
Okay, that is basically my report for the Safety Services meeting, unless there's any other questions. Okay, if you haven't heard none, we'll move on to street light reports. I don't think we have anything this month for street light reports. So we'll go to 9C, which is the RCMP report. Of course, the first piece of paper we always have is our statistics sheets for the month. I'd like to point out a few things to the council tonight. Under traffic occurrence, which is a top section, traffic collisions, we had six for the month. And that is it. And then we go down to provincial statutes, which is the next thing. Second last paragraph is quarantine act. We had 21 occurrences of quarantine acts. And we might get Corporal Dudley to just explain basically what work has to go into a quarantine act, just what they do briefly. Harassing communications under crimes against persons, we had five. And I believe that's probably these telemarketer calls that we get every once, once in a while. Down to common police activities, NC checks, that shows a blank. That should be 75, 75 for the month, which we forgot to put in. And the SOTS issued for the month was 26 for the month and 21 warnings handed out. I'd like to also point out to the council that our survey showed that we had a 53 percentage of agreement of increasing police officers within this town of two members, 53%. It's basically margin of error of 50%. So I'll call on Corporal Dudley if he could explain the quarantine act for us and any other questions that we have.
Okay, thank you, Council. Quarantine act, so in the last year, that's another duty that we have here in Stratford. There's typically three types of requests. There's priority one, which requires immediate police attendance to a location to check and make sure that person's isolated. Priority two would be check with them when time permits before the isolation is ended. That's when someone may have not provided a phone number or for whatever reason, you're not able to contact them. And then there's a priority three, which is sometimes within that two weeks, check in on that person, see how things are going and just confirm they're, they're isolated as required of health. Those requests are sent to us from, from the province. So we'll get, we'll generate a file, we'll do our checks, and then we'll report back to them on our system. Generally, pretty good as long as they're isolated. If not, then we consider issuing that ticket if they weren't. So far, we've been good here in Stratford, so people have been listening to the annexation request.
At one time, Department of Law Life used to do those checks for us. And now there's San Benandro with the RCMP and Stratford.
So yeah, conservation still plays a large role in that, but it's a partnership just as COVID also has, has a response. So they'll also do all the checks, but the residents of Stratford, when we get them, RCMP will do the checks.
And the harassment communications, is that those telemarketers people calling?
No, no, that's, no, no, it's harassment.
Okay, so harassment in a different sense.
Criminal, that's criminal.
Do we have any more questions in regards to statistics for myself and Corporal Dudley?
Question I have, Counselor Smith, Corporal Dudley, is it fair to say that the numbers for this month are the same as year to date, 2021? So would it be fair to say that those numbers are just been carried over and not?
A month to the year to date?
Yeah, well, that was before the month of January, so I would say 26 and 26 would be, yeah, I think you're correct in saying that.
Same with the 20 and 19, I don't think those numbers are not right either. I believe it was.
That's just, that's just one of the same month, same day, same year. I have 26 and 22 for SOTS. Yeah, that's, mine says 26 and 21. It's, it's a little hard to read because of the lineup here. Those numbers correct, Garrett? I guess so. Yep. No, it was going to.
No, but I just don't understand what Deputy Mayor Close's question was.
If you look over to year to date, so it should be January's.
Fourth last line.
Oh, yeah, because it's only till the end of January.
Yeah, so they're right.
Yeah. The January numbers are the whole numbers.
Yeah, so that would be right then.
Yeah.
I just want to say Corporal Dudley, great numbers there. If you're tickets and your warnings, the warnings, you know, prevention, put a stop, you get your lights going. You see, they have great numbers.
I also want to say the visibility is up tremendously. I mean, they had a vehicle stopped at New and Art by Petrican. They're there every morning on the highway and, yeah, and I'd like to echo that as well. But the, in the subdivisions, I've noticed, and a couple of subdivisions I've been in, I've noticed visibility is, is really good, so thanks a lot for that.
Glenn, just have one question. I know the detachments are getting E-tickets.
Yes.
Can you explain, just to give us a brief summary where we're at or?
Absolutely. Yeah, for sure. So starting, it's almost three weeks now, that's called E-ticket, it's electronic E-ticket. So what it is is basically bringing us up to where other police agencies have been. It's a quick digital scan of a driver's license. It eliminates a lot of, I'll say, calculations. So you type in the vehicle speed, it's a drop-down menu, it's electronic. At the current time, we'll still provide paper copy to the court, which eventually what we'll do is we'll simply send the issue of that ticket electronically goes to the court. It's taken some time, obviously, it's changed, it's technology, and the technology takes time to, I don't know, flow through. But we now have E-ticket here in Stratford, so it's good.
I don't, oh, sorry, you have another question, go ahead. I was just going to ask, now that you've been in the new facility for a year, I don't want to put you on the spot, but are things working out okay? Is it, is it, you find it's, it's better than your other?
Oh, absolutely. It's night and day. I mean, we have, we have, obviously, with the drone community, the tactical role as well, so no, it's been good.
In regards to E-ticket, Corporal Dudley, were we getting any, Stratford, did we get any, any machines, your cars?
So all our vehicles in Stratford are good.
Okay.
Yeah, and Constable Sanders is actually one of the trainers on it.
Okay.
So we've got to fit the election, get Queens members over here to have E-ticket, so.
Now, one question we had in regards to the information on the ticket. If the ticket says at or near Stratford, no matter where in Stratford, that money goes to the town. It's not a select street or anything like that.
Yeah, again, that, the financial component of it to deal with the province.
Yeah, but there was a concern that on certain streets, the money would go to the province and not to Stratford. But I think the answer to that is, if the ticket says Stratford, the money comes to Stratford.
That's my understanding, yeah. We don't have to check, but good question. We maintain the road. We'll put out a near Stratford and that's where events happen.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess the specific question was the Trans-Canada Highway. If revenue from those tickets comes to the town, maybe that could be followed up. I don't know with their finance department with the, with the RCMP.
But it says in the ticket, the old nation, not the street.
Okay.
So it says at or near Stratford and that covers it all.
Okay.
I believe with the E-ticket, it's going to be better to organize and we'll be able to, with those numbers right, to be able to reconcile them, yeah, yeah, look at the numbers.
Well, with the E-ticket too, it has a GPS location as well. This is where your vehicle was when you issued it. We'll draw your attention to page eight, response times, check in priority two, follow up response times. You see that one?
Don't think that information is for the public, so that, that was for individual reading, so.
That one was, okay. Two point, two minutes, four seconds for priority two calls, Stratford.
Okay, sorry. If you want to stay there, Glenn, we'll add to the RCMP additional information. And this basically gives us a location of our accidents. I noticed we had one vehicle accident on the Hillsborough Bridge and I'm well pleased with that because we've been months now with three lanes. And I don't think there's that many accidents there now or, I figure it's not going to be. And the, the number of tickets, there's nine for speeding, 14 non-moving. That's inspection stickers and license plates and that's probably yourself that checked once.
It's both, I mean, they're different color, they, they pop out, right? This time of year.
And so that's basically the RCMP report. Unless we have any more questions, Corporal Dudley or myself, we can probably move on. I'd just like to thank you for everything you do. Thanks very much. Thank you. Keep it safe. All right, we'll move on to 9D, Humane Society Report. The details again are in your packages. It's a pretty well standardized month, as most months are. They make patrols, they investigate, they report when necessary, and then there's a thing. I did notice one line on the second page regards to a license. It said, dog savvy, home needed. I'm going to call the Humane Society and see exactly what that means because it struck my curiosity. Does anybody have any idea what that is?
It just means that the person is familiar with, let me have two dollars.
Okay, all right, then, okay, so in other words, they, they check the appearance of it. All right. We'll next move on to transit report. Transit report, the numbers are there. I noticed that the transit numbers for this month are the same as in 2016, 2021. So it basically showing a little bit of life, not as much as we want, but it is showing a little bit of life. There was a 52% on our surveys saying that they wanted extra transfer, extra transit to the unserviced areas of Stratford, which is a good number. I want to point out, at our last committee meeting, Safety Services, we had a new member, and he brought a different light onto us. And when he, he basically said that when we're talking transit, we're looking at people, we're looking at, have two cars in the air, and he said there's a lot of people who are moving to this community from other parts of the world that have budgeted for rent, food, heat, lights. But if they can get away from a motor vehicle, which is a big expense to them, they, they, they like that. They want transit in Stratford so they can live in Stratford and use a transit system, which is a much smaller cost than what they're facing. So for the sake of immigration and seniors and low-income people, the transit is needed for those types of people. So it brought a different light to me, to think that, yes, I have my own vehicle, but I don't think about the people who count on transit. And he says that if the transit is in place and steady and on time, there'd be a lot more people moving to Stratford because of it, students included. So I just wanted to bring that point up to the council tonight, just to let them know about it and how important it is really. Questions on transit?
Counselor Smith, I'm not sure if you've done this yet, but I know when I was Chair of Safety Services there, once a year or whenever, we used to bring in some ridership for a meeting. Four or five, six people come in that are, that are on the bus every day and questioning the service and how we can make the service better. And we used to have great meetings with that, so I'm not sure if you're doing that or not, but it was a great.
I think, I think the only way to do that now would be via Zoom or something like that. That could be done, yeah, something that could be.
But it was a very worthwhile exercise and I learned a lot about transit from these people and just what they go through and do. One fellow went to summer site every day, so we've got connections. And, and we don't know really what's going on in our community with transit and how people depend on it.
And I would suggest that later on this year, when the COVID gets down, Zoom is nice, but I have people in the seats and interacting, I find out. But yeah, if you look at that, I don't know. Really good exercise. Okay, well, that's it, that's a, that's a good idea, yes, thank you. Any other questions on transit? Okay, Crossroads Fire Department. Numbers, for some reason, for the last two months are down. Good. Well, it could be that people are at home during the day now and working from home and not so much stuff going on and being proactive. But we don't really know why that is, it just is. The fire calls are way down, so that's basically it. I was at the fire hall meeting the other night. They will be giving the, their estimates for costs for the fire department to the town for our budget meetings. If it hasn't already been done, it will be done shortly, so we know about that. And we had one incident in January, miscellaneous smell of smoke. And apparently that was a short in a wiring mechanism. And it started smoking. And once again, the people were home, they smelled the smoke and it didn't catch fire, so. All bad things, some good things. And that is basically it for my report, unless there's any other thing somebody wants to bring up.
Any questions for Counselor Smith, his report? If not, thank you very much, Counselor Smith.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll now move on to Recreation, Culture, and Events. I'll ask Chair Steve Glant to, Counselor Steve Glant, to give his report.
Thank you, thank you, Your Worship. As usual with our meetings, our Recreation.
As usual with our meetings, our Recreation, Culture, Events Committee, we had a Rec- Recreation, Culture, Events Meetings, our Recreation, Culture Meeting, and our Events Committee for the month. We're getting prepared now for summer projects, believe it or not, February tenth today, and we're sitting down, looking at the soccer fields and so on, and getting our planning placed for the spring here, so just around the corner. Of course, our two rinks are open, our outdoor rinks, there are pondside, it's back in action right now, and in Bunbury, I was down today, just got a resurface again, they, they had it and they lost it, and they're, bring it back, because of the thaw there, right, so. But anyways, it's great to see the workers, it's, like, it's great, I just get.
Minus thirty, forty, and you see the workers down there, and it's, it's great to see some of our workers, and our eighty-four, a couple of our staff there's out in the light, and we're all sleeping, and they're down playing our game for our residents, right? Anyway, we had our youth center, annual holiday party, and.
Youth Center Holiday Party in the youth wards on January twenty-second, at the Stratford Emergency Service Building, which is a beautiful building. The event was divided in three sessions by grades to allow for social distancing. There were gra, there were games, Secret Santa gifts pizza, Mayor Steve Ogden handed out the awards, and I was, and including myself, were there to present some awards with the children, kids. The grades five to six, the winners were Elliot McNeil McGinnis, the twenty-five-point-five hours, Gabriel McCabe, 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 eleven-point-five hours, and Tommy Turpin, at ten-point-two, two-five hours. The grade seven eights was Eddie Duncan, ninety-one-point-seven hours, that's a lot of hours, Zo, Zo Sharpely at eighty-four hours, and third was Aleah Zavire, fifty-eight-point-two-five hours. And then down to our grades nine and twelve, Sam Bradley at sixty-nine hours, Ethan Banks at sixty-three hours, and Ashton Dudley at fifty-seven hours. And it was a great night, and I was very proud as Chair of Recreation, to see the kids down there on a Friday night, and everybody just, everything was just so positive, and a great, your mayor, your great speech, and talking to the kids, and back and forth, and they, thanking them for what they do for the community, and it's, it's just building every year at the, at the youth center, and it's just something we gotta keep working on, and keep it there, we don't want to lose it, keep the momentum going, right?
A great bunch of kids, just a great bunch of kids, yeah. They do an awful lot for our community.
Oh, they do, and they do a lot of volunteer stuff and everything else, right? The town center gymnasium, walking track and fitness area, and always get busy in Elk of Snow, Jim Daley uses for the month of January, one hundred and forty-one people a day, and that's, we're at busy hours between nine, ten AM, twelve PM, and two to four. New hours operation are working well with all the residents and clients. The Stratford programs, our minor basketball and so on are taking off, and the events, Stratford Winter Fest is currently on now, the month of February. Some of the activities, we have the Trail Bingo, sledding at Meadows, sledding at Fox Meadows on February thirteenth and twentieth, outdoor guide at walks, kids skates on Saturday morning from nine to eleven at Ponside Park Rink, adults skates on Sunday evening at Bunbury Rink, seven to nine PM, and the Curling Day in Canada Ponside Park Rink on February twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth, and a variety of individual family activities for, from home. So that's, that's my report there. Just want to make note, the Steele family from Stratford have a, got a lot of, a lot of good hockey players in their family there, Sarah Steele, who was, we just noted, playing with the women's hockey team now, over the, over the weekend, Ryan Steele was nominated for a prestigious, prestigious Hobie Baker Award, Division One Hockey Player, for, you know, one of the best hockey players in the States there, so it's a real, real honor to have that gentleman himself come from the town of Stratford, and of course, you have Zach McKeown there playing for the Vancouver Canucks, Canucks, and so on, so it's great to have these, these kids looking forward to the pro game, and the Hobie Baker Awards, it's a, it's a big award, a lot of, a lot of American Hockey League, a lot of American college teams down there, you know, you know, participate and so on, so. But anyways, just wanted to note that to Robbie, Robbie and Debbie, the parents there, congratulations, and hope that Chair for him be, he wins that award.
Yeah, and I might add that I had in my notes to give him a shout-out as well, but he, it's not just for hockey that you get that award, it's for all-around life skills, and, you know, volunteering in the community, and all the things that, you know, are, are good, and.
Leadership skills.
Yeah, leadership skills, and a whole bunch of, whole bunch of things like that, so everybody can go on, there's a link, I, I shared the link there, but everybody can go on and vote for him if, if you're so inclined, because it would be great to have someone from Stratford win the Hobie Baker Award, so I encourage everyone to, if you can, to vote for him.
Also worth mentioning, for Ryan, he is also on the Dean's List, and he's studying finance, which, you know, as a student athlete, it's even that much more challenging, and to achieve that is, is something as well.
And I guess we have a connection here to, to our council and to our CAO, so I think you've got, you both, Robert and Darren, Counselor McDougall and CAO Hughes, should be very proud of your, of your relative there, very, very fine young man.
And of course, the grandfather here of, of Ryan is George Steele, well-known resident of Stratford, George, and deeper now is Bert Steele, and Bert Steele was a FIP, fantastic hockey player in, in the sixties and seventies there, so it's, it's in the blood, I guess. So that concludes my.
Any questions for Counselor Glant on his report?
Counselor Glant, I was just wondering on the waterfront, there'll be an upcoming waterfront consultation, I'm just wondering, do you know when that's gonna take place? Sorry to put you on the spot, I should have, I should have, I just thought of it as I was reading the report, I knew that they were coming for a second round of consultation, just wondering when that might be.
We're, we're looking at probably the last week of this month for the consultation to go live to the public, and it'll be open for a couple of weeks, two or three weeks, for, for feedback, so we're in the process now, working with the contractor to go through and get everything ready, and proof it, and that kind of stuff, so, yeah.
Excellent, all right, thank you.
Any other questions for Counselor Glant? I just want to make a note also that, on sort of a sadder note, that the guardian of T-Hill, someone who looked after the park down there, and was really instrumental in helping out around the town, and on, on Events Committee, and numerous things like that, has passed away. Mike Chapman, we're very sad to say that he, he's gone now, and he, but he really contributed a lot to the town, and I'd just like to pay tribute to him for all that he's done for, for our town. With that, we'll move to, unless there's anything else that anyone would like to add, we'll move to item number eleven, Finance and Technology. I'll ask Chair Counselor Gail McDonald of Finance to give that report.
Thank you, your worship. The report is in your package there. First, perhaps I'll go over what the department's been doing for the last month. They've been working on purchasing items for the Safe Restart Program, which is a funding for any COVID-related expenditures. There have also been several meetings with staff and council on the budget documents, and more to come. Budget requests were put out on social media, and we are trying to finalize a date for their pre-budget consultation virtual meeting. The Unified Communications Phone System has been awarded to Eastlink. New computers have arrived, and are currently being set up for the staff. We're finalizing ISDA paperwork to get the financing of the Pipe to Charlottetown Sewer Project in place, there'll be a resolution in tonight's package as well. Staff are working on year-end files for the Stratford Seniors Complex, the staff and council have participated in the first of the Office 365 training sessions. The Capital Projects work, spreadsheets rather, have been updated. There are also meetings with Town Suite on the Planning Module, and staff is also currently and continuing to work on the Asset Management Inventory to prepare for the introduction of the Town Suite Asset Management Module. So that's what the department is busy at. We had a, our first finance committee with the, some of the old and new committee members on January nineteenth, that report is also in your package. Basically, it was, we did a lot of introductory comment, or discussion for the benefit of the new committee members, went over the terms of reference for the committee, we reviewed several things, like the results matter, we also went over the Safe Restart Program, and discussed the financing for the Pipe to Charlottetown Project. We also did some discussion on the pre-budget consultation, and we discussed the cyber attack that occurred in St. John de Brunswick, just to ensure that our IT is up to date on what happened over there. So once again, the Capital Projects Update is a continuing month-by-month report that gets updated by the department and reviewed by this committee. We also discussed the long-term budget plan that was given out to residents to complete. At the time of our meeting, there seven hundred had filled it out, the, the survey at that time, once it closed, though, there was over a thousand had participated, so that was a good number. The income reports for the town and utility are also part of the package, the financial statements. Kind of in a nutshell, revenue's down about three-point-five percent, expenses are also down to a twelve-point-three percent, and everything pretty well relates back to COVID issues. It's well in utility now, utility revenue is up a bit, and that's mainly because of the government grant that is now showing on the books, that wasn't shown before, and expenses are down to the tune of fifteen percent. So that's my report, your worship, if there's any questions, myself or the finance director can respond, and I also have a resolution.
Any questions for Counselor McDonald?
Counselor under four eight, I noticed that non-residence tax rebate presentation will advise your community, committee of that, and that is being talked about.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, please proceed with your resolution.
Thank you. Resolution number FT zero-zero-one dash twenty-twenty-one, Pipe to Charlottetown Sewer Project, Long-Term Financing. Whereas the town of Stratford has constructed a wastewater delivery system to the city of Charlottetown, and whereas the town of Stratford asks for proposals for long-term financing in the amount of two million seven-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand two-hundred-and-fifty dollars from the following financial institutions, Bank of Montreal, CIBC, Royal Bank of Canada, Bank of Nova Scotia, and TD Bank. And whereas the request for proposals closed at one-thirty PM on December seventh, twenty-twenty, and whereas the financing of two million seven-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand two-fifty is within the ten percent capital debt threshold of the town of Stratford, given that the current borrowing limits for the town of Stratford is based on its total assessed tax base, which is eight-hundred-and-eighty-two million three-hundred-and-forty-five thousand six-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars, times ten percent, which equals eighty-eight million two-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand five-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars, of which the town of Stratford is using fourteen million six-hundred-and-eighty-thousand and forty-six dollars, as of March thirty-first, twenty-twenty. And whereas the town of Stratford asks the banks to submit two alternative options for financing, namely, option one, for fixed-term financing, and option two, for banker's acceptance and interest rate swap. And whereas the following rates were received for option one, fixed-term financing. So the chart is there in your package, and whereas the following rates were received for option two, banker's acceptance and interest rate swap, and the chart is in your package as well. So, and whereas at its December ninth, twenty-twenty council meeting, council passed a resolution to award the long-term financing to Royal Bank of Canada for a twenty-five-year swap term at a rate of one-point-seven-two percent, and a credit spread of zero-point-four-five percent, for an all-in rate of two-point-one-seven percent, subject to market fluctuations prior to closing. And whereas the council now wishes to authorize its mayor and chief administrative officer to enter into a banker's acceptance service agreement, a credit facilities agreement, and an ISDA agreement with RBC on behalf of the Stratford Utility Corporation to facilitate the aforementioned long-term financing. And whereas the council also wishes to authorize its mayor and chief administrative officer to enter into a guarantee and postponement of claim on behalf of the town of Stratford to guarantee the Stratford Utility Corporation's indebtedness to RBC. Be it resolved that the Stratford Utility Corporation enter into a banker's acceptance service agreement, a credit facilities agreement, and an ISDA agreement with the Royal Bank of Canada, the agreements. The town of Stratford enter into a guarantee and postponement of claim with the RBC, the guarantee, in the form provided by RBC, to guarantee the Stratford Utility Corporation's indebtedness to RBC to a maximum liability of two million seven-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand two-hundred-and-fifty dollars plus interest, at a rate equal to RBC's prime interest rate plus five percent. Facility, facility four, under the credit facilities agreement, being a two million seven-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar non-revolving term facility for the wastewater delivery system financing, be and hereby is authorized to be repaid by consecutive principal payments in accordance with the schedule to be provided by RBC Capital Markets, each based on an original amortization period of twenty-five years, and the balance repayable in full fifteen years from the date of drawdown, all in accordance with the terms of the credit facilities agreement. The mayor and CAO be, and are hereby authorized to sign the agreements on behalf of the Stratford Utility Corporation, and such other documents as may be required in connection with the financing, and be and hereby are authorized to sign the guarantee on behalf of the town of Stratford. And this resolution serve as a security requested for facility four under the credit facilities agreement. This resolution bears the recommendation of the Finance and Technology Committee, as submitted via an email poll on December seventh, twenty-twenty, so moved.
Do we have a second here?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Okay, discussion, any questions or comments on this, on this resolution?
This loan is gonna be paid by the people who are on the sewer and water line, like, or is this from the town taxes that this is being paid?
I'll let the finance director handle that specifically.
It'd be handled by the Stratford Utility Corporation?
Okay, so the, the people who are using sewer and water, they get the monthly bills or the quarterly bills now, and that's how it's being paid?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions or comments?
I think for me, it's more of a clarification, because, and Gail, you know this, but for anyone watching, is, this was all agreed upon back in December, this particular resolution is adding on to it, and it's connected to the agreement that has to be signed, because we did that banker's acceptance type of financing, right? So this is the agreement that has to be signed in line with that, is that the understanding?
Yes, that's, that's correct. We, we passed the resolution in December, and again, the rates, this is just to satisfy the lawyers with, you see, in our, in our legal counsel.
And, and this won't necessarily apply to all, all financing that we do, I think this is kind of like, once you do this once, then it's, it becomes robotic in further financing.
That's correct. With RBC, now we would have an ISDA in place on both the town and the utility.
Yeah, okay, perfect.
So Kim, would that be for all banks, or just RBC going forward?
Just with RBC.
Okay, thanks.
Oh, so if we did this type of financing with TD, we would have to go through this process again?
That's correct, but the, the ISDA is a template, so it would be very similar, so the, the back, the, the work to get the agreement signed wouldn't be as, as difficult, because we would have already run through it, through the template with RBC.
Okay, and did you want to stand on your tippy toes any longer? No, I'm just.
I, I just had, had one, one question, if that's okay? I don't want to make you stand on your tippy toes too long. Just wondering if, am I correct in saying that this is probably the largest loan that we've ever taken out?
Under the utility, it would be, but under the town, we had the emergency services facility last year.
So this is the biggest utility has taken out. And the other point I wanted to ask you about, and correct me if I'm wrong, but this amount that we're borrowing is the town's share of the ten million dollar plus wastewater amount that we're borrowing is the town's share of the ten million dollar plus wastewater project treatment pipe to, to Charlatown.
Yeah.
So it's really, we're, we're getting, what, twenty-three cent dollars or whatever on this, on this investment?
That's correct, yeah. It's, it's our amount that we have to finance after all government grants have been received.
Yeah, thank you.
I know there's a lot of people in Ward One happy tonight. Because come next spring, hopefully.
Okay, any other questions for Chair of Finance? Councillor McDonald, any, any further questions? Or any other discussion? Okay, we'll, we'll now move to the, to the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Thank you for your report, councillor McDonald. Okay, we'll now move to item number twelve, Planning, Development, and Heritage. Unless the Chair of the Planning, Development, and Heritage Committee, councillor Jill Burridge, give her a report.
All right, we had a meeting fairly recently, February first, I guess it was. On the docket was, um, mainly we went through building permit applications. The main one being subdivision applications. And we're gonna be dealing with a change in a approved subdivision concept plan from twenty nineteen. That's gonna be in a resolution tonight. But essentially, what is going on there is the Concord development down by Bunbury Road. It was, it was approved in twenty nineteen, and it was an as-of-right design. So it was something that went through. It appeased all the as-of-right bylaw implications. What happened was our sustainability coordinator was down on the site and recognized this kind of ecologically, um, mature, ecologically, I guess, valued piece of property. It's a mature stand of trees. It has hundred-year growth in there. It's got beech trees and it's got maple trees, a lot of beautiful hardwood trees in it. And she identified that she would, if we could save that, we should, if we could preserve that. So, so she brought it to Kevin, our planning director, and they went back and forth with Concord Properties, thinking maybe we'll try to switch a few of the lots that were destined for this area, which would mean cutting down those trees and shimmy them to other pieces of the development. Concord was great and worked with the team to make that happen. So that's what's being proposed tonight is, is a little rejigging in that previously approved Concord plan to save this space. So more on that to come, I guess, within the resolution, but that's the lead in. Other than that, we had basically a lot of subdivision street names. A lot of new subdivisions have come through, so you'll see resolutions coming up and regarding street names in these new developments, so. That is, I guess we did go over the waterfront concepts, draft concepts. We took a quick peek at those. And, uh, yeah, and then the McMa, I'm pronouncing that wrong, McMa. Place names within Stratford. So you'll see signage in other pieces of PEI where we're putting the McMa names. I know down around Pamir Island, they're already installed. So they're looking to do that in the Stratford area as well, so we got a recommendation, the committee, to move forward with that. That's my report. If anyone has any questions, feel free.
I just want to personally thank Concord developers for their understanding. They didn't have to, but they did, and I'm well pleased that those woods are being saved.
Yeah, no, the, Kevin can attest to this, but I think they've been really accommodating and willing to work with us on that, so that's been great.
Any other questions? Maybe permit summary?
Okay. Moving on, we'll go to the permit summaries in your package. Building type, building permit summaries are both there. If you have any questions on those, I'll probably direct you to Kevin. Hearing none, I'll move on to the first resolution. You're gonna be sick of hearing my voice tonight. I'll read fast. But the first one is in line with the Concord Properties subdivision. So I will read it in. Number PH zero zero one, twenty twenty-one, dash SD zero one five, dash nineteen. Concord Properties Revised Subdivision Concept Plan, Bunbury Road. Whereas in August of twenty nineteen, preliminary approval was given to Concord Properties to subdivide parcel number three nine three, zero zero zero, eighteen point five nine hectares or forty-five point nine acres in total area into a hundred and seventeen lots located off the Bunbury Road, Heron Drive, Squire Lane, within the medium-density zone R two. And whereas during engineering design, it was discovered that the developer would require additional storage for stormwater, so they acquired an additional adjacent property and have proposed a larger stormwater pond, which now is primarily on the newly acquired land. And whereas upon a recent review of the town's new environmental sustainability coordinator, it was discovered that a mature stand of trees containing local native species was within an area that had been approved for semi-detached lots to be developed. And whereas, after an internal staff discussion, the town approached the developer asking if they would be open to revising the concept plan to save this treat area with the knowledge that no units would be lost from what, what was previously approved. And whereas, after some consultation with their consultant, the developer agreed and has submitted a new concept plan which revises several of the lot types along Street A, but also preserves the treat area in its entirety. And whereas, the new concept plan will make changes to the percentage of uses within the overall subdivision, increasing the number of lots above single dwellings from thirty-eight point five percent to forty-three point three percent. And town staff are proposing, since it was the town that initiated this proposed revision to the concept plan, that council use its authority to approve this revision as a conditional use within the medium-density residential zone R two. And whereas, the original concept plan had proposed eighteen thousand, six hundred
Square meters.
Square meters. My eyes are getting old. Ten point zero one percent of total area for parkland dedication, excluding the two thousand sixty meter squared area proposed for stormwater management. And whereas, the new concept plan has proposed twenty-three thousand, two hundred meters squared, eleven point nine percent of total area for parkland dedication, excluding the seventy-eight hundred meter squared area proposed for stormwater management. Be it resolved that preliminary approval be granted to a revised concept plan from Concord Properties to subdivide parcel number three nine three, zero zero zero, and one nine one, six four three, nineteen point four four hectares in total or forty-eight point zero two acres, increasing the number of lots above single dwellings from thirty-eight point five percent to forty-three point three percent into a hundred and eleven lots located off the Bunbury Road, Heron Drive, Squire Lane, within the medium-density zone R two, subject to the following conditions. Conformance with the preliminary plan showing lots one to one hundred and eleven prepared by CBCL Limited, drawing number one nine two, six two seven, revision B dated January twenty-one, twenty twenty-one. That a stormwater management plan be designed by a licensed engineer using low-impact development guidelines approved by both Department of Transportation, Infrastructure and Energy, and the town of Stratford. That the proposed parkland area as shown on the preliminary plan be deeded to the town of Stratford as parkland dedication totaling twenty-three thousand, two hundred meters squared, eleven point nine percent of total area for parkland dedication to the town of Stratford pursuant to section four point nine of the town of Stratford zoning and development bylaw, excluding the seventy-eight hundred meter squared area proposed for stormwater management. That the concept design must meet all the Department of Environment requirements and a plan must be prepared showing how erosion and sedimentation will be controlled and contained during construction. That proposed public roads shall be designed in accordance with the provincial road standards of PEI, Department of Transportation, Infrastructure and Energy, and that a subdivision road agreement shall be executed. That the sewer and water system shall be designed in accordance with the Stratford Utility Corporation's servicing standards, and that a utility agreement shall be executed along with the payment of all applicable capital contribution fees required by the utility corporation. That the developer makes an agreement with Canada Post and meets Canada Post's requirements for establishing community mailboxes in the new subdivision. That all other relative provisions of the town of Stratford zoning and development bylaw, bylaw number forty-five, are met. That preliminary approval shall be valid for a period of three years. Be it further resolved that the mayor and chief administration officer, administrative officer are hereby authorized to sign the agreement on behalf of the town or the Stratford Utility Corporation. This resolution does bear the recommendation of the Planning and Heritage Committee as discussed at a meeting held on February first, twenty twenty-one. So moved.
Do we have a second here?
I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion?
I have a few points to make here. I've walked that piece of land before a snowstorm on Monday or Sunday night. I have to say, I'm very impressed with the development of this piece of land. The trees, which have been mentioned, are saved. The trail system is already marked out. It goes through that tree area. Beautiful walk. The playground is already in place. Our community gardens are close by, and they're not gonna be touched, Kevin. The community gardens are not gonna be touched, and there's room for expansion if we need it.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. And there's many exit points for traffic here. There's not just one street in and one street out. There's gonna be a lot of exit points there for that subdivision?
Yeah.
So. Correct. Yep, they're on the screen there now.
And we did, I did have received one call today in regards to water. The people of Bunbury Road were concerned about the water. And I think that's been looked after already in the plans, but if you want to give a just brief description for the people out there viewing tonight?
Sure. Just to, to quickly summarize, like, with the existing field as it exists today, the stormwater kind of runs northerly to the Bunbury Road. And I think the inquiry we had in particular today was a resident that lives along the Bunbury Road that will back along this subdivision. And they were just, they, they know there's a lot of water that runs off the, the fields that are there now. So they were just inquiring as to how that water's going to be controlled when there's a full subdivision here in the future. And, and I did email them back and give them kind of a high-level overview. But these, these streets that run east and west across the property ultimately are going to be the interception points to collect the stormwater that comes down from the other streets and the other lots. And they will bring all the stormwater over to this new stormwater management pond, which is being designed. It's orig- a portion of it is on the, the original property. And then this is the adjacent property that was referred to in the resolution where the, the larger portion of the pond is to be. And the outlet of that pond will come across the upper part of the Robert Cotton property or the property that the community gardens are on and go into a, an upgraded storm source system along the Bunbury Road until it goes down and goes under the Bunbury Road and then into the Hillsborough River. So even this new street F is going to be designed that the stormwater for it will come out to Street E and then go down to the new stormwater pond. So any residents along the Bunbury Road will, will actually see an improved stormwater system from what they currently have because the, the new system will be designed to, to redirect the water away from their properties.
Thank you. And one last thing, the trail system that's gonna be put in place, that's gonna hook into our whole town trail system, right? It's just not gonna be a trail upon itself. It's gonna be hooked into the main routes.
Yep, there's currently a trail system that starts in front of the town hall here, runs up to, up along the tree line, adjacent to the town hall property, crosses Ducks Landing, and then goes down to Heron Drive through where I'm pointing at on my screen. I apologize, it's probably hard for you to see. Comes down here, and then this is where the, this is where the, so there is an existing, I would call it a hiking trail, that's down through this property now. The town had permission from the private landowners to just basically mow an area through the field, but they're up through the existing treat area. And maybe I will, so this is, this is all proposed to connect down through to the, the Robert Cotton property or down to the land where the community gardens are now. Maybe I'll flip to this slide which, which Maddie actually proposed. So this is to show a little bit of the treat area, and I did send this to council this afternoon, and there's a little bit of a description there of what actual species are found within the treat area. So this is, these are, these are great pictures to show, you know, hard, hard to see in the wintertime with all the leaves off the trees. Maddie also went back, and I don't know the data off the top of my mind, top of my head of this ortho photo here to the right, but it does show this stand of trees. It's, it's gotta be, it's gotta be pre-nineteen hundred because she did say that these were, these were over, these trees are over a hundred years old. So this is the area on today's ortho photo. Now, this next picture shows a little bit of the walking trail that's through there now. You can see it's just a bit of a hiking trail. But very nice, very nice wooded area and a, and a, and a nice catch by her to, to bring it to our attention that this is something that is of significant value to the town. And if there's a way to redesign the subdivision that we can protect it, that's, that's, that's what we're attempting to do.
And last question, the walking trails are basically gonna hook up at the underpass on the Trans-Canada Highway so the kids can walk to school if they have to from that subdivision. And they can walk to the high school from the trail system. That'll probably be all interconnected eventually?
I think it's a, it's a combination of trails and sidewalks at this point.
Yeah, okay, good. Thank you.
I just want to echo everything that Derek said about this subdivision. It's a great example of the developer working with the town planners to, to come up with the best solution for us. And I think this is one of the first subdivisions that I've looked at that had seven exits. I don't think we've ever had that before, Kevin. We might have, but first one I can remember. But when you look at the trails, green space, and working with the next developer to combine the two green spaces, I believe, to, to have one, one space there on the bottom left. But I, I, I think that this is a great, great plan and, and looking forward. And kudos to Maddie for coming, coming up with that green space because if you look at those pictures, it's absolutely beautiful. So kudos to her for bringing that to planning's attention. And, and Concord working with the town to, to come up with a solution there and, and working together to, to make Stratford a better place to live and a lot more green space, so. Thanks, Kevin, for all that work you're doing there.
Any other comments or questions? Discussion?
Did we talk to transportation there regards to Bunbury Road and like the road traffic? And was a study done for that, Jill?
So that would have been all covered in the original preliminary approval, all those, that communication would have been done. Because the street network hasn't changed here from that original approval. So yeah, that would have been all covered in that phase. There's a lot of connections, as Gary was saying, so that's a good thing.
It's, it's, I, I live in that area. It's pulling out on the Bunbury Road, it's, you know, but you're saying a six other access, right?
Yeah, there's a lot of connections there.
Okay, any other questions or comments? If not, we'll proceed to the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those against? Motion carried. I, I'd just like to take this opportunity to echo the deputy mayor's remarks regarding the value of this woodland that was saved by Maddie, our environmental, what's the title of her position, environmental?
Sustainability Coordinator.
Sustainability Coordinator. I think that just shows the value of that position. And I note it was an initiative of RCAO to hire that, that you put that position in the organization, and I think it's, it's proven its value and, in this kind of, this is just an example of, of how important that, that position is. So, so really like to recognize, publicly recognize Madeline for that.
It shows the importance of, of going to the site and recognizing what's, it's easy to look at maps and plans from a desktop, but to have someone go to the site and physically know exactly what natural assets are there.
know exactly what natural assets are there, I think that's huge, and I think we have to do a better job of doing that. And I think bringing Maddie into, you know, as a reviewer of these developments is going to be an asset for sure for the town. So bringing her into that planning loop early on will be something we'll be moving forward with for sure. Moving on.
All right, just before we move on, I'd just like to thank and congratulate Kevin for his work on this as well, as deputy mayor mentioned as well. I know there was a lot of work, a lot of negotiation with the developer, but I think it ended up with a really good end result. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Total, what, a hundred and seventy-one lots?
Hundred and eleven.
Hundred and eleven, okay, hundred and eleven. That's great.
I'll move on to, there's a couple of street names, street name resolutions. I don't think they'll be as long as the last one. I'll read fast. Number PH zero zero two, twenty twenty-one, Concord Properties, major subdivision, Concord subdivision, street name. Whereas the Concord Properties new subdivision has four new public streets that require naming to be, to meet civic addressing guidelines for the province. And whereas the Heritage Committee has suggested the following street name, Captain James Crescent, Kelly Heights, Smallwood Terrace, Goldsmith Row. Whereas the history of the proposed street names is attached. Be it resolved that approval be granted to the following street names for the new Concord Properties subdivision, Captain James Crescent, Kelly Heights, Smallwood Terrace, Goldsmith Row. This resolution bears the recommendation of the Planning and Heritage Committee as discussed at a meeting held on February first, twenty twenty-one. So moved.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Okay, discussion?
It is worth your while to read that history, because on both sites, yeah.
I was really impressed with the, the, Captain James Crescent, Smallwood, Kelly Heights, I know Kelly's an area on Bunbury Road. Smallwood Terrace, a former prime renewal land, Joey Smallwood, some history there, and there's a lot of history behind it, a lot of, it's great, it's great to see that.
I just want to congratulate the Heritage Committee. I think they did a great job, and not only in these streets, but all the streets. They do their fact-finding and their research, and they come up with little stories for us, and yeah, it's really good. That's great.
Well, I think when people look at a street sign in Stratford now, they know that there's a meaning behind it, and if they choose to, they can, they can discover a rich history of that area, that house, or that street, and so I think it's really valuable, all the research that's done by, by the Heritage Committee and the Planning and Heritage Committee as well.
It starts a positive conversation. You're walking, and you know, you see those names, you're asking them questions and talking about it, it starts a conversation, and people in that area are proud of it, right?
Any other discussion or comments? If not, we'll proceed to the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried.
All right, I'll go to the second one, and yeah, I think we have to mention Doug Kelly on this. He does a lot of the research here. He's, he's on rail. Okay, number PH zero zero three, twenty twenty-one, one oh two five one nine, PEI Inc., twenty-two lot subdivision, Rank and Drive subdivision, street name. Whereas the one oh two five one nine, PEI Inc., Jackson Livingston new subdivision has a new public street that requires naming to meet civic addressing guidelines for the province. And whereas this property was owned by Williams Much, and there was also another William Much within Stratford who owned the Brick House on the Stratford Road, who were uncle and nephew to each other. And whereas, to aid in distinguishing between the two William Muches, the description of the Brick House and the Wood House were adopted as middle names for each due to the different building materials each of their homes were made of. And whereas, the Heritage Committee has suggested the following street name, Wood House Court. Be it resolved that approval be granted to the following street name for the one oh two five one nine, PEI Inc., Jackson Livingston subdivision, Wood House Court. This resolution bears the recommendation of the Planning and Heritage Committee as discussed at a meeting held on February first, twenty twenty-one. So moved.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion, comments?
I like the history lesson here, but just wanted to point out to the people listening, we in Atlantic Canada have a unique way of naming things, and this is another prime example of how we justify how a street is named. Brick House, Wood House. And if you didn't know the history behind it, wouldn't know what we're talking about, but we have an old saying here in PEI, turn left at the Purple House, which is no longer there, but everybody knew where the Purple House was. So that's just the way we think down here in Atlantic Canada.
Any other comments or questions?
So in this, when you look at the subdivision, there's a carryover from the Concord street name we just approved. The Smallwood Terrace extends into this development, and then it tees onto Wood House Court. So one of those names we approved in the first, in the prior resolution spills into this development.
Is that included the exit off Concord Properties?
Hmm?
Does it include an exit off the Concord Properties? Off?
Yes, the Smallwood Terrace, yeah.
Okay, any other questions or comments before we vote? Okay, a call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Thank you for your report, councillor Burridge.
Welcome.
Okay, we'll now move on to infrastructure. I'll ask deputy mayor Klow, Gary Klow, to give his report.
Thank you, your worship. We did have a meeting on January eighteenth. The minutes are in your package. Most of what's in the minutes will be in my report here tonight. The wastewater collection system to the Charlestown Pollution Control Plant, wastewater is now flowing to the new pump station for testing purposes only. There are some programming issues that needed to be worked out for the station to run correctly in auto, automatic mode. We intend to wait a week or more before permanently severing the connection to the lagoon. The connection is being maintained in the event that we would have to stop operation of the station and would need to divert flow back to our lagoon. The inflow infiltration reduction strategy, we are currently monitoring and reviewing the sewer system to identify any areas requiring repairs. Investing in Canada Infrastructure Program, sewer lift stations upgrades. Coles Associates has submitted a revised design report including high-level construction cost estimates for the upgrades that they have identified. They've indicated that the Corrige Pump Station replacement will be one million dollar project, and the installation of three thousand sixty meters of four main from the station to the trunk main will be three point three million dollar project. And upgrading the gravity line into the treatment plant will be a hundred thousand dollar project. These are the estimate projects cost to redirect the Corrige Pump Station to the trunk main. Additional upgrades will be required to twenty-five hundred meters of gravity line in order to accommodate the ultimate build-out of the towns. This work can be phased in over time, and the department has met to review the report, and comments have been sent back to Coles to be addressed, and we're awaiting a revised report and recommendation from Coles before deciding what work will take place this coming year. The water station upgrade, the scope of the projects was reduced to meet the budget, and the project was awarded to Hanson Electric for two hundred and one thousand one hundred dollars plus HSD. Hanson Electric anticipates beginning the work of this coming March. The Active Transportation Fund, the Georgetown Road sidewalk project has been completed, with just landscaping to be done in the spring. Coles Associates have submitted a tender ready package for review for the Keppick Road multi-youth path. They completed the construction cost estimate of one point nine million for the trail. The Fullerton's Natural Park has been put off until the spring, and the infrastructure staff have been working, clearing snow operations throughout the buildings, property de-ocean operations and sidewalks. Staff is currently going through the town center and emergency service center to do a complete set of filter changes on all the ventilation systems. They will also be checking the belts and electric motors that run the ventilation system. Staff have also completed the cleanups and reorganization of the maintenance facility, trail grooming, outdoor rink preparation, sewer and water inspections, sewer lift station maintenance. So the infrastructure staff have been extremely busy through the month of January, as you can see. That's my report, your worship. If any questions, we'll try to accommodate them, and I'm sure if I can't answer them, I know Jeremy will.
Any, any questions for deputy mayor Klow? I just have one, one comment, deputy mayor, and that is, I neglected to thank the province and the federal government for their contribution to the wastewater treatment pipe to Charlestown as well, because I mentioned twenty-three cent dollars. Well, the rest of that money came from the province and the, and the federal government. I think fifty percent of it came from the provincial, federal government.
Federal government, yeah.
Yeah, the federal government, so we really appreciate their, their help with the, you know, both MLA James Elward and federal MP Lawrence McCauley for, and federal MP Sean Casey for their support for this project, as well the city of Charlestown, obviously, are partners in this, so we really want to express our appreciation to them as well.
As well as all the taxpayers.
As well as all the taxpayers, that's right.
At the end of the day, that's where it all comes from.
It's a real great benefit and much needed by Stratford, and it's long overdue, so we're really, really glad to have that going forward.
Yeah, it's a, it's a major, major project for the town, and it's, with, with everybody involved in this, all the partners involved, and it took a while, but we all came together, and we're finally see the door closing, then moving on to prep something else, and, and this is, this is great for Stratford.
So we look forward to an official announcement from the province in the near future, and...
I'd say within a couple of weeks, I'd say there'll be an official announcement, yeah.
Yeah, so we'll get more information at that time. Yeah, thank you.
And you guys, councillor Klow and the mayor, nine years at this, right?
Sixteen.
Sixteen? No, nine years at the water, yeah.
Well, it's an ongoing issue, and I'm sure Jeremy's, I know Jeremy's here about sixteen, so there's always issues, but you know what, everything has an end, and this is, this is an end, and we're going to be moving things to Charlestown and working.
We have the, we have the financing in place, and the testing is underway, so hopefully we'll have an announcement on the, on the final date for the project coming up soon.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments for deputy mayor Klow?
I just have one, Mayor Ogden. My snow removal, I know some lawns are getting damaged. Who's the responsibility of reseeding the lawns and so on to our residents?
Depends if it's the province, or is it, is it our contractor?
It's our contractor, yeah.
Our contractor?
Yeah, I get a couple of calls on it, so I was just wondering.
Normally, we do look after that, Jeremy.
Is there sidewalk contractor?
No, just for edge, with the plow, with the front lawns.
Yeah, that's, that's the province.
Yeah. That's what I'm saying, the province.
The province will be going around, or they should contact the, I think it's three six eight four seven seven zero to the logic plant with the proper transportation.
Okay, thank you.
It's important to, to remember, though, that the province owns thirty-three feet from the center of the road, eh, to the, to the property line. The property line doesn't start till thirty-three feet from the center of the road.
Okay. They're usually very good, though, to go back and do repairs if they're noted during the season.
Yeah, I think every year you'll see them doing repairs throughout the town of Stratford that they rip up with their plows.
Yeah.
It's the same with our sidewalk operator. We, we like to hear them as soon as, the complaints as soon as we can, so we can make note of them and go back and repair them in the spring.
Thank you for your report, deputy mayor.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll now move to committee of the whole. We have a resolution regarding a CARRY board appointment, Charlestown Area Recreation Incorporated Board Appointment. I'll ask the chair of recreation, councillor Steve Glant, to read that resolution.
Okay, your worship, the Towne Stratford Resolution, CW zero zero two dash two thousand twenty-one, Capillary Recreation, CARRY Board Appointment. Whereas the Towne Stratford through the agreement with the Capillary Recreation Incorporated, CARRY, must appoint representatives to the board of, board of directors, CARRY, a not, a not-for-profit company that was created, just a last, come on up here. My mouse went down there, hang on. Technical difficulties. Didn't have my mouse tonight, so I'll just wait here, hang on. Patience. Gail. Okay, thanks.
That's great.
Created, designed, constructing, operating the regional aquatic facility, and whereas Kim O'Connell served as the town's representative to the board of directors of CARRY in two thousand twenty and has agreed to serve again. Whereas CARRY has made a request to have Kim O'Connell with her finance background to serve another term on the board. Being resolved that Kim O'Connell will be appointed to the CARRY board for the year two thousand twenty-one to, to represent the town's interests on the board. And cut me down here. This resolution bears the recommendation of the committee of the whole as discussed at a meeting held on January twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-one.
You moved that resolution?
Moved.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second that.
You second it? Thank you.
Thanks, Gary.
Okay, any discussion, any comments, questions?
I believe the town's well represented by Kim on this committee.
Any other comments or questions? If not, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Thank you, councillor Glant. We now have a resolution regarding a request from Statistics Canada to increase awareness of the census. Not sure whose portfolio that would fall into. I'm going to say sustainability. How about councillor McDougall? Would you please read that?
I sure will. Town of Stratford Resolution, CW zero zero three dash two thousand twenty-one, request from Statistics Canada to increase awareness of the census. Whereas Statistics Canada will be conducting the next census in May of this year, and whereas they have reached out to the town seeking support to increase awareness of completing the census among the residents of the community, and whereas the support of the town will have a direct impact on gathering data needed to plan, develop, and evaluate programs and services. And whereas thirty-two thousand people across the country will be hired to assist with census collection. Be it resolved that the Towne of Stratford, that, be it resolved that the Stratford Town Council supports the two thousand twenty-one census and encourages all residents to complete their census questionnaire online at www.sensus.gc.ca. This resolution bears the recommendation of the committee of the whole as discussed at meeting held on January the twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-one. So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Okay, any discussion, comments? I think we get a lot of good information from the census, so I think this is, I would encourage residents to support this as well.
I think too, to point out with a, a town with our growth, that to have this census data is going to be such a great thing for us to get a handle on certain statistics within the community. I think it'll, we'll be able to use that data to leverage ourselves on different projects and different things going on when we have a good set of data. So I think a town in our junction and with the growth we've experienced, I think it's even more important for our residents to fill that out.
You're absolutely right, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's also important during this past year and COVID, that accurate information is given to the government of Canada, so they know where and when, and everything needs to be shipped, so we can have numbers. So it's important to fill it out.
Okay, any other discussion, comments? Not call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Okay, we'll now move to item number fifteen, sustainability. I'll ask the Chair of Sustainability Committee, Counselor Darren McDougall, to give his report.
Thank you, your worship. Our committee met on February the 3rd. I'll highlight some of the points, the minutes from our committee meeting are in your package We, we were discussing policy and bylaw amendments for the switch program, PACE program, also known as. And without getting into the details of the bylaw amendments, it's just a logistic, logistical issue. It's, it's exciting to, to roll this program out. It's really fits with the vision of our town of sustainability. We're really practicing what we preach, and I'm excited as a resident, I'll likely utilize this program moving forward myself. And it's nice to have programs such as this available to our residents to encourage clean energy and energy efficiency and whatnot within our community. We introduced a new climate intern who's going to be working with us. He'll, it'll, it's a position through the University of Prince Edward Island. He's in the, in the sustainab, the Sustainable Design Engineering Program at UPI, where they offer a master's degree. And to be able to utilize these resources that have been made available to us from the University of Prince Edward Island in this particular program, I'm going to maybe butcher Abby's last name here, but Abby Po Corral is the gentleman who's on board here to work with us. And it's exciting to have him on board, but more importantly, just that program that is available at UPI, to be able to tap into that resource, particularly for our town, who, again, our vision of sustainability, and to have that right next door, the university and that program, and then the, the students that are acquiring these skills, and for us to be able to, able to utilize that is very valuable for the town. We, we had a peek, too, at some of the waterfront design concepts. It's an exciting time, again, to, with regard to our waterfront and how it is going to be developed, and our committee will, will have a role in that, an important role, as will the residents and everybody here on council, and it's exciting. It's, it's, it's really the, it'll be the, one of the focal, or focus points, I guess, of our town. So to, to be engaged in that process is, is something that excites me and the, and the Sustainability Committee as a whole, and I'm sure all other counselors here. We, we then touched on the, and I'll, I'll give credit to Counselor Derek Smith here, just in an informal conversation, it kind of came up that, you know, to, it'd be beneficial to the Town of Stratford and to develop a strong relationship with our partners to the east. And I, when Counselor Smith had mentioned it, I, I was quick to agree, and as was some other counselors, and I know Counselor Burridge pointed out that when she was out campaigning, she, she bumped into not only people from Eastern PEI, but more specifically, her hometown of Surrey seemed to be well represented here in Stratford. And, and I, and I agreed, and reaching back into my memory bank from the campaigning days, there were a significant amount of, of residents here who immigrated from Eastern PEI. And I guess perhaps they're on their way to Charlestown, didn't make it, and decided to stop in Stratford and really enjoyed it here, so they decided to stay. But I think it's, the more I thought about it, it really, it makes a lot of sense. We're the, we're the gateway to the east, and I think that the Eastern PEI is, is a little untapped right now. I think on the island, we've, we've, and rightfully so, that the North Shore is a fantastic part of the island. And we, we as an island really encourage tourism and whatnot in that particular region of the island, but the eastern end of the island is, is a fantastic part of the island. And, and I know myself, I spend a lot of time there, particularly now with hockey and whatnot, but just great people. I think that developing a strong relationship, whether through our business, businesses and whatnot, encouraging tourism to that particular region, and seeing ourselves as a gateway perhaps to the east. It's, it's, it's an interesting concept, and, and one that I think Stratford should embrace, and I think that collectively in council here, we, we have, and we're really going to make an effort to, to reach out to our business partners in Eastern PEI, our tourism partners, and, and our friends and family and whatnot, and hopefully develop a really strong relationship with Eastern PEI. Those were the highlights from our, from our meeting, your worship.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? I just want to say that I concur wholeheartedly with the idea of building relationships with our neighboring communities to the east. I think that we really have a lot to learn, a lot of shared issues, there's a lot of great opportunities for business, and for us to point people to businesses that don't exist in Stratford, and vice versa, and, and really make, make each other stronger. So I think this is a, a great initiative, and I, I also congratulate Counselor Smith for, for raising this, and Counselor Burridge as well, because I think this is a great, great initiative. Any other comments or questions?
I just have one. In regards to Section C under the budget, we have a program in place about people could apply for and get a tree for their yards, and these trees are 10 feet tall, and rid oak or rid maple or whatever. We're going to continue on with that, I believe, if we could, if we get the money for the budget.
Yeah, we'll be discussing that as part of the budget discussions, but...
That, that was a program in place, very successful.
Yeah, it was sold out within a day or two, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Counselor McDougall, just, how far are we, Phase 3 of the Business Park, or we looking? Do you know where we're at with the Business Park there, extending that Business Park?
It's, it's contingent on the community campus at this point, so depending on, on development there, it will dictate development in, in that phase of the Business Park.
Yeah. I've been talking to a lot of people, the commercial space, and there's not much commercial space left in the urban area, right?
Yeah, correct, yeah.
People looking for spots.
Yeah, you're right.
Don't know.
Yeah.
And, and there is a master plan that, as CEO Hughes mentioned earlier, that has just been, we just awarded the contract for a master plan for the campus. That'll include the Business Park component of that, so then it'll be a matter of planning the, the phased approach to, to development.
Thank you.
My, my understanding is, too, I think that in that Phase 3 park, I think most of, if not all, the lots are sold. We, we haven't even developed it yet, so we might have to start looking at Phase 4.
Well, I think we have to keep in mind, too, the, the gray, you know, what they're going to do with their Kilmac buy, and, you know, a lot of that is commercial core land, so that's going to be satisfied, I'd say, organically through that process as they get going, too. There'll be a lot, a lot of businesses that would want the more kind of front-facing office spaces and stuff that they can provide, that they can't get in the Business Park, per se.
Yeah. Okay, if there's no other questions, I'll thank Counselor McDougall for his report. Thank you. Okay, accountability and engagement, that's my committee. We had a meeting on the 21st of January, 2021, and we, as all committees, the first meeting of the year, we did a committee orientation. We talked about the mandate of the committee, what our, how it fits into our strategic plan, and, and some of the things within our mandate that, that are on our to-do list. We discussed doing a business survey to find out what businesses, first of all, I guess to find out if people would participate, businesses would participate, and I think the results of that were, there were 11 businesses that responded. We have about, I think, around 260 businesses in Stratford, and that includes home-based businesses. So it seems like a small number, but it is, it is a time when people are very busy, and, and so based on that, we, we have decided to, to proceed with the, with the business survey. And we, where the recommendation will be to council to, to initiate a business survey, to see what, what we can do to provide a better climate, or improve anything we need to improve for, for businesses to either locate here or to be successful here in Stratford. What are, what are we doing right? What, what do we need to do better? And what are some opportunities that are there to, that we could fill in with, with some action on the part of town, of, of the town? We also did a pre-budget consultation, and we talked about what some of the priorities of, and how we were going to do that process, and the, just provided an overview of the 2020 budget, and also asked the committee for ideas on their budget priorities. They talked about from the committee's perspective, access to the harbor waterfront, maintaining and expanding the trail system, more crosswalks, the high school, obviously, the beautification of the waterfront, and additional trails groomed in the wintertime. Those, the committee saw those as the major priorities. So we did go over the engagement stats, that's the number of engagement transactions took place through our website, through Facebook page, Twitter, and Instagram, as well as press releases and, and other communication initiatives. So that, that was our report. That was basically what we, what we covered in the meeting, and so that's my report. Any, any questions or comments on any of the elements of my report?
In the, in that committee, I'm just wondering if they had any feedback on, we've had a lot of engagement here on the waterfront, and we had other engagement here recently, too. It seemed like we had a few things on the go. Do, do they, do they find that the engagement we're doing right now is positive? Or like, do, do you have that conversation, like?
We, we didn't discuss, we talked about the long, long-term budget consultation that was done through the, through the website, and we did talk about the waterfront consultation. Robert, was there anything that we discussed that I neglected to mention with regard to Counselor Burridge's question? I'm not sure that we had a conversation about, I think your question is, do they feel there's not enough consult, or too much consultation, or enough consultation? Is that?
I guess with, I guess whether it's meaningful.
Meaningful, yeah.
Engagement, and, and that, you know, that we're, I mean, I think that there has been a lot of positive feedback on the long-term financing and the waterfront, but I kind of feel like we might have stepped it up a little notch on engagement. I'm just wondering if they're feeling that, if the feedback is, is along those lines.
I know in the previous meeting, we had a lot of, from the previous committee, we did have a lot of really positive comments about, some, some of the members really felt that we're, we're doing a good job there. I don't think there was anything negative on that, was there, Robert?
No, I agree. The previous committee certainly was, was quite pleased with our engagement efforts. I would say the new committee probably just doesn't have enough knowledge and experience yet, but we, we do have on our docket, we're doing an engagement strategy review. So we'll be talking about that at the next meeting, and having more discussion about how are we doing, and, and should we be doing better, or should we back off, or what other tools should we be using, et cetera. So we'll be doing a thorough review of that over the next few months, and council will be involved.
There, there were a lot of good ideas from the younger members of the committee. We only had one committee member back from our previous committee, so it was, you know, people were just sort of getting a feel, but we did get some really good ideas around short videos and that sort of thing from the younger people, that we should be trying to use that in our, in our communication approaches, and really, you know, I guess, nothing longer than a minute or two to, to get the message across. And some of the other ideas, I just slipped my mind right now, Robert, but there were a lot of good ideas.
Yeah, it's a good group, they're engaged, they just haven't been too deeply involved yet. Even, even the returning member was only on for two months before the end of the year, so.
Yeah, that meeting was recorded, I believe, Wendy, was it not? So I think we could probably look at some of those ideas that were, that were presented at that meeting from some of the younger people, and, and maybe report back for the next meeting.
It's just captured in the minutes, the recording for nineteen minutes.
Oh, okay. Oh, that's too bad, okay. Yeah, there were, yeah, it was a good discussion, it was, you know, but, but from what I recall, it was a lot of the younger people, I think we could tap, tap into some of their ideas, and, and really have a, either a focus group, or a, a, just a discussion with council, or with people that are interested to, to see what, brainstorming session or something to come up with, how to connect with younger people, and also with newcomers. That's, those seem to be the two people that we're not connecting as much as we possibly could with, so that's, that would be our challenge, I guess, is to really reach out to young people and to newcomers through our engagement strategy. Any other comments or questions on my report? If not, we'll go to Human Resources. Anything to report there?
Nothing to report there, your worship.
Okay. I think we had a couple of meetings, but we have, don't have any, anything to report from there. Any inquiries, number 18, is inquiries by members of council? Anything that anyone, any member of council would like to inquire about regarding any of our business to date, or anything at all? If not, we'll go to item number 19, other committees. Stratford Seniors Complex. I'll ask Chair of that committee, Deputy Mayor Klow, to give his report.
Thank you, your worship. We did have a meeting on January 12th. Great committee, great, great reports back from O'Donnell there, I forget his first name, but he does manage the place. The minutes are in your package from that meeting. We did go over the senior management committee policy.
Jerry O'Connell.
Jerry O'Connell, yes. Great guy, great worker, and, and so quotes have been received to replace the, the copper pipe on the recirculation of the water line, and quotes are also being received for the replacement of the patio doors. There's 12 units there that have to be replaced. We're working with CMHC to revise our capital replacement plan. There was a snow blower at the building that they weren't using, ended up selling that to the Town of Stratford. The contractor that's doing the work there now doesn't require that. I know Kim is working on the year-end audit for that, and other than that, everything's great over there at the senior home. So that's my report, your worship.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Deputy Mayor Klow?
Is there, Counselor Klow, a waiting list for the seniors building?
Huge waiting list, yeah.
Yeah?
Do you want to get on it?
Someday.
Someday, yeah. I believe there is, Kim, I'm not sure how many, but there is a waiting list.
Yes, there's thirty, thirty-some people on it.
Yeah, it's a, there's a great appetite for people, low-income seniors, and that's what I'm looking at, and I know we have horrible housing over here, but with low-income seniors, it's a, a challenge every day, right? You know, seniors living on two pensions, right? You know, it's a, it's an eye-opener, so hopefully, you know, we can just, you know, hopefully the list will be smaller.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, I think, to your point, I think it's really important that we keep our eyes open for any opportunities for funding for, because we could probably build another one of those complexes and, and have it filled as well. So it's, it's really something that's needed, and, but it's, it's really difficult for the town to do it on its own without CMHC or, or some other funding partner, because that's the model that we're currently, CMHC is basically the funder of that, of that facility. So for, for a town our size to take on that is, be pretty difficult. But we should really keep our eyes open and, and really lobby as much as we But we should really keep our eyes open and, and really lobby as much as we can for funding to put more seniors' affordable housing in place. Any other comments or questions on deputy mayor Clow's report? Thank you for your report, deputy mayor. Okay, we'll now move on to item number twenty, appointments to committees. I don't think we have anything there, Robert? Proclamations, we don't have any proclamations? Any other business that anyone would like to put on the floor at this time?
I would like to mention that vaccines are coming for the COVID. Just wanted to give the public notice that if given a chance, please get your vaccination. It's gonna help everybody. Thank you.
Anything else? I'd just like to take this opportunity to congratulate our Member Legislative Assembly, James Elwood, on his new portfolio, transportation and infrastructure. So I think that's really good for Stratford to have, have him in there, so really look forward to working with him on, on some of our priorities. So congratulations to MLA James. Any other business? If not, I'll call for a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Thank you.